Thank you, Mr. Curry. It looks like everybody's on board, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Seven o'clock. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and if everyone could just please have a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item B1, the first item on the agenda, the adoption of the agenda. At this point, I would just like to mention in our electronic format, we do move through the meeting a little bit differently than we do in person. And so I'm Christine Smith, I'm the Chair and Piedmont representative on the Board. And then when we are identifying ourselves and speaking in turn and voting, either I or please feel free to identify yourself as we get through the agenda this evening. Mr. Curry, did you have anything to add in terms of the format for the electronic meeting?
No, ma'am, you've got it covered. I've added the emergency ordinance to the call of order, a call to order in case anyone wanted to review it in detail. It's there on Board Docs, and that ordinance drives the operation of this meeting and the meetings being conducted pursuant to that ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. At this point, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some of it.
That's Mr. Parrish?
Yes, it is, yes.
And do I have a second?
This is Kier Whitson, I'll second her, Debbie.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. So we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. Mr. Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. That takes us to the next item on the agenda, item C1, the Budget Work Session. I know we've met several times on this budget and obviously for good reason, there have been continued developments on the budget. If you wanted to lead us into that discussion, Mr. Curry, please.
Yes, ma'am, as you're aware, we've been on a journey since the budget holders submitted their request to me. The administrator, I compiled that request, those requests, formed them into a balanced budget, presented them to you back in March. Of course, a lot has happened since then. The Board shaped that and into a Board Proposed Budget that was released for public hearing, and that public hearing happened on April 20th, a week ago. And of course, between the time of the advertisement for the Board's balanced budget and your actual public hearing, additional, we gained additional understanding of what was happening at the state level from a budget standpoint, with the number of dollars being unallotted in the Governor's proposed amendments and then essentially accepted by the General Assembly. That brings us to tonight's meeting. And between today, tonight, and when the Board adopts a budget, you'll need to identify any changes that are appropriate to the Board's proposed budget. The Board Proposed Budget is attached to Board Docs in the same form as it was for your public hearing. I've prepared a change log document that may be helpful for the Board as we move through this discussion, I'll share that on my screen. And at this point, I'd be happy to take any discussion from the Board or walk you through how I've set this spreadsheet up to start.
I know that there have been a lot of changes, and so unless anyone on the Board has a strong objection, I think it would be beneficial to everyone if you could walk us through the proposed changes.
Okay, so as you're, as I noted before, the state has essentially frozen some revenue dollars for us, and they've been unallotted until revenue reforecasting can occur. That will happen later this summer sometime and possibly again after that. But the effect of those un allotment actions lead to $71,341 of county revenue that is potentially in jeopardy if state revenue forecasts don't prove adequate, and approximately $72,000 of school revenue, the $72,000 figure provided to me by Dr. Grimsley. So in total, that's $143,000 of revenue from the state that may or may not be delivered to us, and we won't know that till later in the fiscal year. And so it's appropriate for the Board to handle that probably one of two ways. Keep it in the budget as revenue source, but then safeguard offsetting expenditures in a way that is contingent so that if the revenue doesn't come, you never spend the dollars. The other way is just to remove the revenue altogether from the budget and remove an equal amount of expenditures. And then if the revenue does show up later in the fiscal year, the Board would work through a budget process to amend the budget, add it back in. Secondly, the Board's budget in, released for public hearing, already took several actions between the County Administrator's proposed budget and the Board's proposed budget. Two items that were already held in contingency were the $80,000 for the restructure of the health insurance program and $80,000 for a 2% bonus for county employees. That 2% bonus for county employees was, it's not something I generally like to do as far as bonuses, but that's what the General Assembly included in their budget for state responsible employees. And so I went ahead and just did that for all. So those dollars are already in your contingency budget line in your proposed budget as it was advertised. And then lastly, I took actions before you released your budget for public hearing to eliminate some revenue, knowing that COVID-19 was going to have an impact on us. And I've accounted for that in this next section, which is reducing our sales tax revenue by 50% for quarter one of the fiscal year and, or only recognizing 50% for quarter one and recognizing 75% for quarter two. That amounts to $117,000. And then similar for meals and lodging, which amounts to $56,000. So we've already cut revenue by $173,000. And the balanced budget that was released for public hearing incorporated that. The Board may have a thought that that's not deep enough of a cut and that revenues will actually be lower than that. And if that's the case, the Board has, again, two general ways to work with that. You can further reduce revenue forecast by just assuming that you'll receive less in budgeting that in upfront, or you can identify additional expenditures to shift to contingency and only release those dollars from contingency if your revenue from sales tax, meals and lodging, and other lines meet your forecast. So there's, there's a lot of different ways you can handle missed revenue in the future. You can account for it now as an estimate, or you can safeguard some dollars and hold them to be unspent if the revenue never comes in. And lastly, a couple items in this table, which is your tracking table for actions you take today, ahead of you a little bit, and this can certainly be modified. But action at the, by the General Assembly and the Governor have eliminated approximately $30,000 of revenue. $30,000 is what we budgeted to receive for recordation and grant tourist tax. All that is now going to Hampton Roads for transportation. Not sure why they decided to do that, but they did. And then, so that's a loss right off the top. We've had a lot of discussion about health insurance, and there's actually the two different ways we discuss potentially arranging or designing the cost share between the county and employees. If we, if the Board chooses to implement the proposal that I made in my proposed budget, it'll cost $5,936 more estimated than if the Board implements, implements the method similar to what was done in FY '20. I've shown that as an expense reduction. If you choose to stay with the FY '20 method, the Board could choose to move remaining school raises to contingency. The budget that was, the Board's proposed budget already moved, removed $75,000 of raises, and this would be the remaining value of raises according to Dr. Grimsley. And then lastly, I've identified a row for the county attorney salary increase. It's been much talked about. But it would not be my recommendation to take that dollar amount out of the budget, but rather just move it to a different line within the county attorney's budget because you may likely still need those dollars for legal services if you don't increase the county attorney budget. And so I'm showing it as a no net effect overall. At the end of the day, when you do all that, we're still short $15,000, which is pretty small in the grand scheme of things, and there's few areas the Board could look at to make that up, and one is capital, recurring revenue-supported capital, of which there's approximately $150,000 that you could dig into if you wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. So coming out of tonight's meeting, I believe you, you basically want the blueprint for what we will be hoping to approve at the meeting next Monday, is that correct?
Well, generally, you have, of course, tonight to review and discuss any number of items. And between now and next Monday, I can incorporate those items into the detailed budget, show you what it looks like, and then you could choose to make additional changes. And you have a meeting scheduled for May 11th and May 13th. And so you have the 4th, 11th, and 13th, which by the time we get to the 13th, it'd be, we should have everything the way the Board wants it in a majority to adopt a budget. So you don't have to have it all exactly the way you're going to approve it by the 4th, but it should be a pathway towards the 11th or 13th.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. At this point, I, in the course of a normal meeting, we would have discussion around the table and this electronic platform, it's challenging to do that. So I will just call on everyone by name. If we could work our way around the table, that seems to be the best way forward. And of course, at any time, if one of the Board members wishes to be recognized, you can always raise your hand or start to speak, and we can navigate the meeting that way. And so I would start at the far end of the table with Mr. Frazier.
Oh, I think thanks a lot, I'm not sure, we'll find out. I appreciate Mr. Curry going through that presentation because this is a moving target almost on a daily basis right now. I, I don't really see why we would need to keep that roughly $10,000 in the county attorney category. We could move it to contingency, this, removing that, it's roughly $110,000 still left there. So I don't, I don't know what the benefit would be of leaving it in that category, moving it over into contingency with the rest of the proposed raises.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Donahue?
Would Mr. Curry have any, anything that he could, you know, help me out there?
Yes, you can do that if the Board wants to do that. You can, if that, whatever 10,000 about is moved over to Board contingency, it would be a Board action to reallocate it wherever and whenever.
I mean, we could, if we needed it, we could reallocate it there, but I don't, I mean, it's 119,000 proposed there. We're moving approximately 10, it'd be $110,000 there.
Yes, 50,000 of that is sourced from your general fund balance for contingent litigation needs. So the balance is supportive of our recurring revenue.
Yeah. Okay, that's, that's all I have for right now, I might think of something else.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Donahue?
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith. Mr. Curry, I know we've talked about this a gazillion times, but can you educate me and those on the call, again, if anybody needs it, with regards to the school raises, there's putting the money into contingency? And then there was something about a two-year spread that it could, we could take the opportunity to do it that way instead of doing it all in one lump sum, or anyway, obviously, I'm confused a little bit, if you would help me.
Sure. I've switched over to a tab that shows the unallotted revenues. And of the 72,000 that's reported to me by Dr. Grimsley, that's comprised of enrollment loss funding, at-risk add-on funding, and the state share of the percent salary increase for FY '21. And of course, we all know that our local composite index is so high, the amount we get from salary is very low as far as covering the 2%. But just flash that up for a second. The General Assembly and the Governor approved 2% salary, their share of 2% salary increase for most school employees in 2021, and then again in 2022 fiscal years. The school board, the superintendent, and then the school board have sent you a budget that is, requires the transfer that was balanced in, in my earlier budget that would have a 3% increase plus a step increase. So that exceeded what the state required them to do in order to get the state revenue portion of 2%. What happened between my proposed budget and your proposed budget is that approximately 1% worth of transfer from the general fund to the school fund was removed, rendering that instead of 3% plus a step to something closer to 2% plus a step. Okay? Now, not knowing whether any of the $143,000 will come to us from the state, including 72 from the, for the schools, and not knowing if your revenue miss will be more than 173,000 overall from COVID, if it's, you know, significantly amount, amount more, then you would need to have the ability to stop expenditures somewhere to avoid overspending your revenue. So one way to do that is to take the other expenses and shift them to contingency. According to Dr. Grimsley, their total raise value is about $260,000 included in the FY '21 budget request. So with $75,000 already taken off the table earlier, that leaves $185,000 in raises left in their, in our transfer over to the school board. Now, of course, the school board will do whatever they think is prudent with the dollars that they ultimately get in their budget, they're charged with doing that. But if the Board of Supervisors is of mind to protect additional expenditures in case the unallotted revenue doesn't come in and revenue misses greater than 173, you have to identify different areas. And the raises is an obvious area that would be identified. The county raises from the classification and compensation study were already removed between the County Administrator's budget and the Board's proposed budget, except for these remaining 8%, which is now in contingency and could be held rather than spent if necessary. Sorry if that's more complicated than you wanted.
And just to hit the other part of that, which I think is where it goes back to the two-year question that Ms. Donahue had answered, we have a mandated 4% increase for the biennium, correct?
Well, I don't know that it's a mandate, but if you want to get the state share, you have to do that.
Right. So if we do 2% this year and 2% next year, we're on pace with the biennium.
Correct, correct. And, and of course, it's important for us to have salaries that are competitive so that we can recruit from our neighbors and retain who we have. But in, in times of crisis, sometimes you have to dig deep.
Thank you very much for that explanation. The one thing with the, the revenue reduction, I'm wondering if, and it probably doesn't matter in the grand scheme of things, but your July through September won't be the 75% down, and the October through December will be more like the 50%, just the way the Governor's talking about starting businesses back up so slowly.
And that's, that's certainly possible, so you can look at the value of 56,000 for meals and lodging. Sales tax, I think, will be okay, and because it's still capturing online sales.
Right.
But the meals and lodging is a big question, but it's a little less of a risk because it's not as large of a budget overall, about half as much, obviously, as, as sales tax. So one way to account for risk of less revenue from meals and lodging is to just go ahead and budget less. You could double this number to, instead of 56, you can double it to twice that and then cut costs out of the budget rather than shift them to contingency.
Okay, thank you for that. The other thing, Chair Smith, that I, on the health insurance, just coming from a manager of employees mindset, given the troubles that everybody is having right now with income at home, especially if there's a second breadwinner who isn't either getting an unemployment check or doing well, as well financially, I would like to suggest that we take a six-month view of what our health insurance should be next year and make a complete switch to potentially something more similar to the school system with the 500 and 1,000 plans versus the 250 and 1,000, making sure that the package is fair for all employees, checking to make sure that the hours worked are what should be for the, for the health insurance that's being received, and just look at the entire package instead of changing now when people are in flux and stressed out, putting everybody kind of on notice that it's going to be reviewed for the next few months and then two months before the new budget, next year's budget. We actually start sitting down with the staff to let them know exactly what's going on and give them more time to make the decision that's best for their family. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Mr., did you have anything to add? I'm sorry, Debbie, about that.
Mr. Frazier just had his hand up.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Mr. Curry, Mr. Frazier?
I just wanted to clarify a point before we got too far away and I forgot to ask the question, but if the state were to release any of those unallotted funds that, that we're showing that would have been going to raises or bonuses, would that happen after the first of the year?
We don't.
Not, not, not the first of the fiscal year, but the first of, of 2021, or 2021.
Yeah, I, my best answer is, I don't know, and I'm not sure anybody knows. And I know there's discussions of another session in the summer, but what they learn then, maybe multiple reconvene sessions as revenue is reforecasted over the summer as, and into the fall and possibly into the winter.
Right, but, but the insurance cost would actually happen July 1?
Correct. We need to, I say we, the Board of Supervisors must make a decision on the insurance tonight. And there's a separate agenda item for that, but it's really all wrapped together.
Okay, that, that's what I had, sorry to interrupt anybody.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Everybody else.
I, I believe we were, Mr. Whitson, I believe it was your turn to speak.
Thank you, Chair Smith. My primary focus in our last couple of meetings and work sessions has been on this question of our local tax revenue stream and trying to anticipate to the best of our ability where we might end up through quarter one and quarter two, as Mr. Curry has laid out. And I've spoken with Mr. Curry and also communicated with Board members that I have a remaining concern that these lower projections for the sales and meals and lodging tax revenue streams might not be conservative enough. And because we just still do have time to finalize this budget and make decisions on either reducing spending or putting various items into contingency to hedge against lower revenue expectations, I just wanted to raise that again. I did have a good conversation with Mr. Curry just to talk through the basis for these projections, and then as a rookie in this process, I wanted to understand how we actually do hedge against likely restricted revenue streams in both sales and meals and lodging tax. And I think, Mr. Curry, if I understand correctly, and I'm comfortable with the time being, but I want to raise my concern, so we all keep our thinking caps on, so to speak. On the one hand, it's on the front, front end of this budget, move, move significant, significant items into contingency, and then reevaluate on an ongoing basis what our revenue in these two local tax streams might look like in the end. But I'm still a little, I'm, I'm still a little bit uncomfortable with the Q1 projection in particular, because we're talking about basically 50% of our expectation on sales and meals and lodging tax. And I think what, what it could do is put us in a position where we're putting a little too much hope into the future, whereas I would like to maybe take a more conservative approach on that Q1 projection, and then maybe ease off in Q2. And that way, at least force us to really think hard before we finalize this budget about what we might have to cut. And while I think, while I think moving items into contingency is not a bad idea, I also think we need, we need to think long and hard about being as cautious as possible, making sure that we're not committing to appropriations that could put us in a bind if these revenue numbers don't come close to what we're projecting now. And while meals and lodging and local tax revenue are minor items in the grand scheme of things, I also have expressed concern about potential delinquency and lack of collection on real property, personal property taxes. And so I don't want to lose sight also of what I believe is the inherent potential instability of those two more significant revenue streams. So in some, my, my remaining concern is that we all take a step back and really ask ourselves if we're comfortable with these downward projections on the local tax revenue stream, and if we've, if we're all very comfortable that our real property and personal property tax revenue streams, which obviously make up the vast majority of our revenue, will hold as we're expecting. And given this protracted COVID-19 health emergency and the related economic effect that we can see in our community, we really do need to think long and hard about those four revenue streams and if our projections should be muted a bit going, going into finalizing this budget. And that's all I have, I'll, I'll reserve my comments on the insurance front once we get to that agenda item, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. So yeah, there's so many unknowns that it really is going to be impossible to sc-. is going to be impossible to sculpt a really precise budget. It's, it's almost like a guessing game at this point. But I think that we're coming along pretty well with this process. I, I, I can wait until the discussion on the, the insurance goes, but I do like the, what we had, what we were looking at last week in terms of incentivizing the, the employees to utilize other insurance. And by, by awarding them the ninety-two dollars a month, I think would give them a feeling that they're treated more fairly than they, than they are now. And so so I, I kind of think it's, it's a good idea to go in that direction. So, but that's, that's about it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. I, I just wanted to echo what my peers have said. My comparison is similar to Mr. Frazier's is, is that every year this is like trying to hit a moving target. But this year, the target is on fire. There's an extra added degree of difficulty. I, I understand the concerns about projected revenue streams. And while I, I understand concerns that are related to meals and lodging tax, there is also a school of thought that once things do start to lift, that tourism economies like ours that are rural and agricultural and nature will actually fare much better than, than urban tourism. So I, I'm I, I don't want to say I'm optimistic about it, but I, I'm not quite as concerned on this revenue streams. I know people are spending a lot locally. People are certainly still ordering in. So I, I don't know that it would behoove us to, to dial down those numbers. I would, I would personally be more in favor of building more into contingency. I think doing that also keeps what we're moving forward more in line with what was advertised. And I, I think once we get past the public hearing phase, the more we can stay true to what was advertised for public hearing, the better we fare if we're not making a lot of moves as we get toward the end of this process. Of course, in a year like this, it's very challenging, but, but building things into contingency rather than changing them would be, would be my preference. And I'll save my comments on insurance until that discussion, except to say I, I agree with Ms. Donna Haye that this is not a great time to make a change. And I, I think we should be consistent and probably mirror what we did last year. So are there any further comments regarding the budget or if there are, are things that you'd like to see changed or handled in a certain way? Could we specifically get to those so Mr. Curry could address the changes?
Well, I, I would, I'd like to say that I agree with you, Chair Smith, about the projections that they, they probably are more optimistic in terms of revenue. They probably are more optimistic than the urban areas. And so I'm not, I agree with you that it's, it's not a big concern as far as I'm, as far as I can see. Thanks.
Thank you.
You have hands up by Mr. Frazier, Mr. Whitson.
Oh, that's a mistake. I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Whitson.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Whitson.
I think while my hand was going up, Ms. Smith, you were, you actually were covering my question. I just wanted to make sure that we're giving Mr. Curry specific instructions on what we, what adjustments we want to see made. I didn't want to lose that as part of the discussion. That's all.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Did you have, did you have specific items of concern you wanted to address?
I, I have nothing further. I just want to make sure that we're giving Mr. Curry clear instruction going forward.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, and while votes, I don't think are necessary at this point, if there's consensus among board members on how to handle something that helps solidify the document as we move forward. As Mr. Whitson was talking earlier, I went ahead and just calculated and dropped in this table the value. If you dropped Q1 of meals and lodging tax to only twenty-five percent rather than fifty percent, so that's eighteen seven fifty. And of course, if you dropped it to zero, it'd be twice that of more that you would have to take off the table. I don't, right now here, consensus to do that in the next version that you see for next week.
Uh, Mr. Frazier, did you want to see reforecast numbers for the, for the revenue income stream or revenue stream for meals and lodging and sales tax?
No, I, I think I've seen them enough. It's, it's depressing and all it is, is like, say, it's a moving target.
Right. And, and Ms. Donna Haye, are you okay with the numbers, the way that they're forecasted?
I think I am, knowing that Mr. Curry has a pretty strong contingency budget to take care of issues that we do have a, a worse situation.
Okay. I, I don't want to put words in people's mouths. This format is just a little challenging, but it, it does seem like we are, are building consensus to move forward with moving things to contingency and, and navigating them as, as the funds arrive or don't arrive and, and navigating the situation that way.
Another area I wanted to touch on, and I typed here, is the, the pay-as-you-go capitalist, recurring revenue-supported capital. And the capital table is, is, was included in the board's proposed budget as shown right now. FY twenty twenty-one is the column that's actually in your budget. And so there are a few items left supported by recurring revenue. Now, there's approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars there supported by recurring revenue. And you could shift that to contingency. However, the board auto, already must award any expenditures over ten thousand dollars. And so just in that, you could hold back award for projects that are to be funded in that area till the second half of the year. So it still acts as contingency even though it's in your capital. The one difference there is that right now, there is still fifty thousand dollars scheduled to go to schools and you, I suppose, could say that that would only shift to the schools after January one or after revenue is forecasted as identified.
I mean, I, I think it's fine the way that's set up, but if, if anyone feels strongly about it one way or the other, I mean, the other, the other big ticket item that we have this year for the first time is, is the, is the possible development of, of paid staff for fire and rescue. And, and we have, is that not also built into the contingency fund?
No, that is set up right now as a general fund transfer in the amount of, I believe it's two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And it's set to go. You could, you could decide it's two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. You could decide to put that to contingency and only transfer it if revenue proves, or when revenue proves. That's certainly possible to continue, further hedge against the, the risk of revenue misses.
And that, to me, is the other developing item, you know, that, that we may or may not have materialized this year. And certainly, I think it's, would be well-funded if we, if we are able to develop it fully. But to me, that's just, that's another, another stream of money that, you know, sometimes we'll work on something, but it will start funding it, but it will be several years before it actually materializes. So that's, that's another item. I wonder if we don't. But again, I'm reluctant to do that because it was publicized a certain way, and I, I'd like to, to keep to that as much as possible.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Any other thoughts amongst the board members for how to handle this?
So I will need to find, we will need to find at least fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars to balance the budget at this point. Depending on whether this, the board moves in the direction of staying with the FY twenty twenty. If you don't, it's twenty-one thousand, seven twenty-nine. So that's something that'll have to be identified, and it could just be chiseled off the, the edge of PGO. You could just, you know, put it in here, fifteen, seven ninety-three, and then fifty, and then you're balanced.
Well, I, I mean, that seems like a reasonable conclusion unless anyone has any strong objections.
Well, you said if we do twenty twenty with the, what, were you talking about the insurance, leaving that the same?
Yeah, now, of course, we're getting the cart a little before the horse because that's the next agenda item, but if, if you didn't, and that went to zero, you would just boost that up a little bit more. If, so if you tell me you just want me to cut the, the, the recurring revenue-supported capital to balance the budget, I can do that afterwards. And the other item on your agenda tonight for preliminary discussion is the property and liability, et cetera, insurance. There'll be a little truing up on that in the budget, which I'll work into all the different spots, which I'm asking the board to come to a conclusion on May fourth. And so I can get those numbers, actual numbers plugged in. Right now, it's just placeholder numbers because we didn't, didn't have them at the time. And so that'll change the math just a little bit. So just wanted to put that out there. That's one way to plug the hole.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Curry. Mr. Frazier, are you okay with, with that approach? Take it out of PGO to, to meet the difference?
Well, some of, some of the monies we were talking about, moving to contingency, if we move into contingency, you still have this hole?
Yes, because that doesn't change the balanced budget. It just moves it from one expenditure line to the contingency expenditure line. So it's still in there in the budget rather than removing it from the budget entirely. By taking it out of PGO, you're removing it from the budget entirely.
I'd hate to postpone any more necessary work at the courthouse. I mean.
Well, we are, we are still incorporating three hundred thousand dollars from your fund balance to support those projects. So that's savings account dollars to support those projects, which your, your fund balance is, is in very good shape right now. And that's the other thing I didn't note, note that if all of this is way off and our revenues come in half a million dollars low, the board has done a good job over the last couple of years where you can absorb that one time. You can't handle it on a recurring basis, but it would get you through a year if you had to. We would, we don't want to have to do that. We should, we should forecast and, and budget the best we can to live within our predicted means. But if the unforeseeable happens, in addition to making extra cuts during the year, you can allocate additional funds from your fund balance to, to bridge that gap.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Ms. Frazier, I appreciate, you know, wanting to get those projects done. I, I know that's something that's been put off, and the building committee's been working very hard to, to assess what work needs to be done first and what's critical. And, and I, I mean, I agree. It needs to be done. I just think if, if the money's in contingency, if we have money in contingency, we can always pull from the contingency fund should a need arise that we can't meet any other way.
Yeah, I guess that's the best we can do right now.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Donna Haye?
Um, I think I am good with what we have recommended. I see that the board contingency obviously has a hundred and sixty K more in it than previous year, so I'm feeling pretty confident, even if revenue isn't as strong, that we're still okay.
And, and that hundred and sixty K right now is the health insurance. So if you go the other direction, eighty K comes out of that. And then the two percent bonus, which is truly contingent, you will not issue that bonus later in the fiscal year if the revenue doesn't prove and the state doesn't come through with their share.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Uh, Mr. Whitson?
He is probably muted.
Mr. Whitson?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Mr. Curry. I, I think my, my only remaining question, and it really departs a little bit from, from the direct question of, of budget and, and moving, moving things to hedge against projected reduced revenue is how do we, and Mr. Mr. Curry, this might be a question for you. Number one, how do we, to the maximum extent possible, monitor? You know, my focus has been on local tax revenue. How do we monitor that as accurately as possible going forward? And then the second question, or really just an observation, is I think it will be important. There are obviously people listening to this call and, and folks who have contacted me, particularly on the school front, who are concerned if we are holding back money that might go to incentivize our excellent teachers to stay here in the county. So my question is, how do we best? This doesn't have to be answered today, but as we go through this coming fiscal year, how do we best and most effectively communicate as far in advance as possible to various stakeholders in our community if, in fact, we're going to face a difficult revenue scenario? And I hope I'm wrong. I hope we don't. But if things get really tough, while we can absorb quite a lot of money one time through this crisis, we also recognize that it could be quite bad. So I just want to make sure, one, that we are keeping a close eye on revenue as, as much of a real-time basis as possible. And that's second, that we're communicating as effectively and, in, in as timely a way as possible with stakeholders, including those in the schools.
Sure. Most of your revenue sources are accrued monthly. Meals and lodging is accrued quarterly. So the, the treasurer's reports that you get at your board meetings have that recognition of revenue each month. And so it would be a lot of attention paid to those reports and some active forecasting as we work into them. If we start missing on monthly revenues, forecasting out to see what that means on a projected basis, possibly assuming some, some growth or none. But you're absolutely right. As we work into the fiscal year, once we get in a couple of months, we'll start to get some real data and know exactly what's happening. And then with meals and lodging, once we get, you know, in that first quarter due, that'll be the, the key to know where we are there. I would expect fourth quarter of this fiscal year, we'll get next to nothing.
Right.
Thank you. Was, was that all, Mr. Whitson?
Right. Yeah, thank you. I would want to, yeah. Yeah, I just, I just want to say we need, it's going to be, it's going to be a tough year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish, did you have anything to add?
Only, I was just wondering. A number of months ago, the treasurer had hired a firm to start auctioning off the delinquent tax properties. And I know that progressed quite a bit, but I'm just, but as far as I know, nothing's been auctioned off yet. And that is a source of income potentially in the near future. I was wondering if there was any timeline on that, if this is going to be within the next, it's got to be within the next fiscal year, I would think. Do you know, Mr. Curry?
Uh, I, I don't. I know that my conversations, she's ramped that back up, and I'm not sure if she's backed off at all, given the current circumstances and trying to balance how hard you go after revenue. That's something we can talk to her about. But she has had some very good past due collections here recently, which was a little surprising. But I will reach out and get an update on that for the board.
Because that, that's got to be a bump in our revenue, I would think.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish, and certainly. Thank you, Mr. Parrish, and certainly our, our treasurer is, is to be commended, um, for. For looking at ways to, um. To get, uh, those, uh, delinquent funds, uh, when she started that process a few years ago. Uh, I think it's, I mean, I think I've been pretty clear that I, I would like to just move as much to contingency as we can. Um, it is a moving target. It, it is for the schools as well. I, I think that they know that, you know, we're in the same good faith. And they're in the same boat. Um, you know, their situation is changing from day to day. And, um, and so, um, having things in contingency just makes our situation more agile as we move forward. And I, I hope that folks appreciate that that's the reason that we're doing this and it, and it will allow us, if we take that approach. To, um, to have the result be, uh, more similar to, to what was advertised. Originally for public hearing. Uh, I, I do think there is a lot of work to do at the courthouse and, and certainly now would be a great time to get a lot of work done. Um, if we are able to, to use some of the funds that we, uh, have, have, uh, set aside in the budget to, to do that work in the coming year. Um, I, I know that would be a, a good way forward and, and certainly something that's been needed to be done for some time. Um, I do think that, uh, the increases for all staff or bonuses for all staff, including the county attorney line. Should be moved to the contingency fund. Um, and then, uh, we should move through the report we received from Baker Tilly. And, um, and do whatever we do in an even-handed way for all staff. And I think that we've been, you know, pretty clear about that and we're, I think we're all happy to. Give any additional clarification. You may need, Mr. Curry, to, uh, to shape the budget for next Monday.
I, I think I have a general idea of where, what, where the board's heading and I will take this and, uh. Mold it into the budget document and have that ready for, um, next week's agenda. And then look at it and mold it further for the subsequent week's agenda.
Was, was there any point of clarification that you needed, um, in order to prepare the document for next Monday?
Uh, I don't think so. I think we're gonna seek, get a little clarity in the next two agenda items. And then, uh, as you all noted, this, this is a process and it's a moving target. Uh, we won't have any of it. Uh, precise, uh, but it will be a version that works and then we'll adjust as we move through the, through the fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Does anyone have anything to add on the, on the budget before we move on to the next agenda item? Thank you. That takes us to item C two, discussion decision regarding health insurance plan offerings. Mr. Curry, if you would cue this up for us, please.
Uh, yes, so, um. Essentially in my, uh, proposed budget, I, uh, suggested that the county restructure. The method that has been used the last two years that I recommended. To share premiums, health insurance premiums with staff. And so in, uh, basically every employer that offers health insurance, the employer. Uh, pays for a portion of those health insurance premiums. So the way it was done in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty fiscal year. Is that the county paid for one hundred percent of the local choice, uh, KA two fifty plan. And then paid a fixed dollar amount for the, to the, for premium reduction for those employees who selected. Uh, to add a single dependent and those who selected to add a family. And the way that was done in nineteen was to provide an additional three hundred dollars for those who. Added a spouse or a child. And then a layered another two hundred on top of that for total five hundred for those per month, for those who some, um. Insured a family. So it was the full value of the employee only plus five hundred for someone who had a family. In reviewing all the documentation leading into this budget, I recommended a change, uh, from basically the three hundred. And five hundred to change it so that it is a flat fifty percent of that additional premium for dependents. And, and rather than a fixed dollar and, as a formula that would work going forward. Also, rather than paying the full amount of the KA two fifty plan for employees only. Uh, I suggested that the, the board should pay the full amount for the KA one thousand plan, uh, which. Is a less feature-rich plan and has a higher deductible, which means a higher out-of-pocket cost for the employee. The total premium for the KA one thousand plan for employee only is six hundred seventy-four dollars. And the total premium for the K two fifty plan for employee only is seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. The difference there is ninety-two dollars per month. And so recognizing that this was going to be, um. An impact to our staff, um, to make this change. I recommended at the same time you made the change, that the board could. Offset that impact by providing that difference in compensation. And employees could elect to either use that additional compensation to pay for the higher premium. Or use that extra compensation to put it in their bank and, uh, use it to pay a point of service cost, or they could invest it in their. Retirement plan, whatever they want it to do. Uh, so that really was a hold harmless for the employee only. The difficulty came with the fact that in nine, FY nineteen and FY twenty. The cost share between the county and employees was set up, as I noted, for three hundred dollars for dependent. Plus, we're one dependent and five hundred dollars for a whole family. Well, when you look at the premiums, basically the way the premiums are priced. The add-on cost from employee only to employee plus one is this, is a fixed dollar amount and from employee plus one. To employee plus family is the same additional dollar amount. So, for example, if. If employee only was five hundred dollars. The increase to cover dependent may be an additional six hundred dollars. And then the payment for an entire family would be another six hundred. It would be twelve hundred on top of the employee only. Looking at that, it occurred to me that providing three hundred dollars for the first dependent and only two hundred dollars for this. For the remainder of dependents wasn't really a fair way to do it. And so I thought it'd be more appropriate to just pay half, fifty percent of all additional, uh, dependent costs. Those employees who have selected employee plus one over the last two years. Have benefited by the three hundred dollars when probably it should have been rather than three hundred and two hun, three hundred and five hundred, it probably should have been two fifty and five hundred. To be fair, but it wasn't. Uh, so if we take a step back, then those, those employees are, are gonna feel, uh. Feel it in their pocketbook every month, uh, as you, as you right-size that. There's a long way of saying that, uh. To do that, um, would actually cost five thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars more than if we did what we have done the last few years, which is continue to pay the full amount for the K two fifty plan. And then split the additional cost. The premium increase, the, uh, inflation from last year with the employees for only the dependent coverage. So I've worked all that out and, uh, and basically it was a, a neutral change to go to my proposal. Because the extra dollars were being shifted to, uh, compensation. Since your last meeting, I did prepare a couple of documents for the board's review. Uh, one of which was a regional comparison that shows, uh, multiple columns. Uh, that shows that my proposed plan and what the cost would be for the employer and the employee. Uh, if we did the same thing we've done over the last couple of years as far as cost sharing. What the schools is doing for cost sharing. And then what our surrounding localities are doing for cost sharing, the data that I had available to me. Uh, the most apparent thing here is that, uh, both the county and the schools have a, have very good programs. Uh, none of our surrounding counties, and I didn't check the schools, pay one hundred percent of employee only. And there are some downsides to paying a hundred percent of, of employee only. Spouses, uh, people who have spouses with insurance coverage. It most, it makes sense for, uh, a local employee to drop out of their spouse's family plan. And take insurance here employee only because there's zero cost employee. Whereas it may be a slight differential cost on the family. I've also provided for you a quick review of a potential escalation over multiple years. And assuming that we increase it four and a half percent per year, which is independent of our local. Claims, because our pool is so small, uh, we're based on the overall pool increase. And so in, uh, nineteen to twenty, it was four point one percent, twenty to twenty-one, it was four point eight percent. So I've escalated this out five years, uh, based on four and a half percent and you can see. Uh, these numbers start to get very big of the total contribution needed by the county for the county share. In twenty-one, if we, uh, use the FY twenty twenty method, it'll be seven hundred and nineteen thousand. Uh, whereas we, if we use my proposed version, it would be six hundred forty-five thousand plus the eighty thousand of compensation. And if you look at those two numbers together is where the, the fifty-nine hundred comes from. When you push that out five years, you can see the growth. Of cost that this is going to cost the county. Uh, is a considerable benefit. And, uh, back to some of the comments Supervisor Donahue noted. It is probably the right time to be looking at our plan. A two fifty and a thousand and compare it to what others are doing, like the schools, K five hundred and a thousand. Uh, Madison County, K five hundred and a thousand. So Warren County does K two fifteen a thousand. But they, uh, almost fully fund the K one thousand and they have a, a pretty decent cost share with the K two fifty. So you can provide a very rich plan like the K two fifty, but providing it at no cost to employee is very expensive. And you can see just how expensive it is total, um, on this chart. So happy to try to answer any questions. I try to condense that, uh, the best I could in the most, uh, layman terms I could.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I know, I know we do struggle with this every year and, and there's been, uh, several. Challenges and restructuring of it, uh, the last few years, so, uh, so that we could address it as best we could. Um, and I, I, I know, I thank you for putting these numbers together after we had some concerns over it, uh, at the last meeting. And so I just wanted to, uh, check in with everybody and see, um, what are my concerns as we go around the table, Mr. Frazier?
Oh, boy. There's just so much there to try and get her, get her arms around, but, uh. I'm just wondering if, if, if it's not, not a whole lot of money, maybe we just leave the insurance alone for one more year till we have a. A better financials picture for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Donahue?
Thank you. I, um, said a lot earlier. I really appreciate all of the documentation that Mr. Curry has put together for us. I think the, uh, five-year out is a big eye-opener and it's obvious that we're gonna have to make changes. But I still believe this is not the year to do it.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Whitson?
Believe he's muted. There you go.
Uh, thank you, Chair Smith. Um, uh, Mr. Curry, I do want to thank you for all the time you've spent talking with me about, um. The details of, of what you've worked out and I think it's. Fiscally very sensible, as Supervisor Donahue just pointed out, the five-year projection is, um. Concerning, no doubt. But, uh, certainly in the midst of this public health crisis. Certainly from where I sit as a representative of Hampton District residents and a number of county employees. I, I feel it's my responsibility to try to, um, give people as much certainty as possible. And while I want to revisit this as quickly as possible. I'm, I'm really leaning toward just continuing the pre-existing cost share arrangement. And I should also add that I've been very, I've been unequivocal. In my belief that we should not be, uh, providing any pay increases, um, in the current environment. And to the extent that the eighty thousand has been characterized as a pay increase, it's really more of a subsidy for increased premiums. I think to be consistent, um, we ought to pull that idea back for this fiscal year, simply continue. What we have been doing, but recognizing that we need to, um, really get on this well in advance of our next budget review cycle so that. Um, we can make good fiscal decisions for the taxpayers while, um. Preserve instability and not introducing uncertainty for employees at this time. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Mr. Parrish?
So I think that this, uh, plan that Mr. Curry came up with is very extremely innovative. And well thought out. I think it provides, uh, for the future and, uh. It's the, it's the most fair to the most people. As I said earlier, I like the idea that the employees that have been getting the short end of the stick are gonna, are gonna get. Uh, you know, they're gonna be more on a level playing field with the other employees that are actually benefiting. From the insurance as it's set up and, uh. I don't imagine I'm gonna get a second on this, but I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we. Approve this plan the way that Mr. Curry, uh, set it up because I do think, uh, now's a good time to do that and I do think that. As I say, it's the, uh, it's gonna secure the future the better and it's gonna incentivize, uh. It, it's the far-reaching implications here, including, uh, incentivizing, uh, as Mr. Curry pointed out, uh, people. To, uh, utilize their spouse's insurance over, over the county. I, I just think it's, it's the fairest thing to do, so I, I'd like to put it in a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Uh, we have a, a motion on the table. Do I have a second? Um, then, without, uh, without a second, the motion would die for lack of a second. I would just say that I, I do appreciate the work Mr. Curry puts into, um, the insurance every year. And I, I do think it is good to be innovative and to take a fresh approach and to evaluate our options. Uh, I just don't know that this is the time to be making a dramatic change into how we. Restructure our, um. Insurance and, um. I think I do agree that this is a time that we should be looking at our options moving forward and making some choices. But it hasn't been obviously an ideal climate to get a lot of feedback and, um. Then to have a open exchange of ideas in person. Um, it's been very. Challenging environment to have those sorts of conversations. So, um, I would, I would suggest we take a hard look at this, uh. This approach next pay year, but I, I'm more of a mind to continue as we have, have been and, and as we did last year. Do I have a motion from a board member, um, regarding this agenda item?
I can make a motion, uh, that we continue with the health plan as it was. Developed, the plan that we had for last year, just continue with this year with the same plan. Um, and then at some point, after the motion is approved, I'd like to recommend we put some plan in place to let people know. Uh, when we're gonna look at options and, uh, at least communicate really well this year, what we're looking at to do next year. Sorry.
Thank you, Supervisor Donahue. Uh, so I have a motion on the table to essentially, uh, implement the program as we had it last year. Uh, do I have a second?
Uh, this is Kir Whitson, Hampton District. I'll, I'll offer a second on Ms. Donahue's motion.
Thank you.
Could, could we have a discussion?
Yes, by all means, Mr. Frazier.
I seem to be missing something. I, I don't, I don't really understand what, uh. Mr. Parrish was saying that some employees are getting a short end of a stick. It's basically the same insurance plan for all employees. The only difference is that. The employees that have family, they get a, a supplement for their plan. But it's not like we're penalizing somebody else. But it's not like we're penalizing somebody else. It's, it's just a benefit that we give. It's one of the county benefits that we give. I, I, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not looking at it the same way. Can somebody elaborate on that or explain it?
Well, what I, what I always had in mind, Ms. Fraser, is that that let's just say an employee is married and the spouse is eligible to get the spouse's insurance. And he, he doesn't, you know, he, and he's taken that, he or she is taking, is taking benefit of that. The person that's getting the insurance is in effect getting more compensation than the person that's not getting insurance. That's, that's just the way I look at it. I don't know, Mr. Curry, if you, can you explain that any better?
One of the things that, that I suggested be done is that, that ninety-two dollars a month not only be provided to those who take insurance, but be provided to all. And there are not many right now in our staff who don't take insurance. And then it be provided to all as compensation to all. And so right now, there's no opportunity for staff who do not take insurance to get any of the compensation. So this is fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars a year of benefit that somebody who insures their family gets that another person who has no family or, and, and only ensures themselves doesn't get. So there is somewhat of a fairness item there, but that is felt through most localities and I'm sure all of the, all the localities that I showed. One interesting thing I can show you in this comparison is that you look at Warren County and what they've done and something that, as Ms. Donnahey noted, we should be talking about, what's next, is that they provide, and you see the note down here, they provide an additional amount of subsidy if you're insuring employee plus child or children versus employee plus spouse. And I, I can only guess that they do that because they don't want to subsidize a spouse who could get insurance somewhere else. I've also seen policies in place that restrict whether a spouse can be insured if that spouse has access to insurance themselves. So you know, some of those policies or some of the cost sharing, yeah, that can go in to try to make things a little more fair. Of course, you want to take care of a single parent with, you know, with multiple children at home. You want to provide a fair and reasonable subsidy to them. And that may very well be different than a two-way journeying household. Each workplace has insurance, but because we offer such a great package, one spouse doesn't bother taking it from their employer. They just allow the board of supervisors to pay for it, which means the taxpayers to pay for it rather than their employer.
I don't know, I just, I just, this, this came up about fifteen years or so ago. And at, and at the time, there were some employees that, that felt that since they couldn't use that benefit of a, of a supplement for a family plan, that we should be paying into a long-term healthcare plan. And, and you know, we can, we can keep trying to make things equitable till we spend ourselves in the grave here. But it's just a benefit that we offered and, and that should be it. If you don't use it, you don't use it. I mean, that's just my idea of it. We, we can't possibly be fair across the board on every single thing that we do. We, we can only afford what we can afford. We, you know, we make certain benefits available to our employees and those are the benefits that we make available.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Is, is there any further discussion? So we have a motion and a second on the table to emulate the, the approach that we share in regards to our health insurance policy. Mr. Fraser, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Donnahey?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Oh, sorry. There you go.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Yeah, I'll vote aye also.
And I also. Thank you all very much. And thank you, Mr. Curry, again for revisiting and doing that additional number crunching so that we could reach a decision on this. I, I know that there's a feeling that we should take a deeper look at this. I, I know that we are supposed to only be doing essential agenda items, Mr. Curry. If we, if we take action to do a deeper dig on the insurance, would that be considered an essential item?
Well, I gather from the conversation that there's a general consensus to, to be looking at this and not, not wait until budget time. And so I think as we get into the summer, I can, I can pull this back out and we can begin to look at it in more detail.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I, I know the other board members do as well. That takes us to the next agenda item, the insurance provider discussion for property liability, et cetera.
Yes, thank you. As the board is aware, we currently use Gini risk sharing, Versa Association for your liability and property and auto coverage and workers' comp and Line of Duty Act, et cetera. There are essentially two providers in the public marketplace, which Versa and VACOR. A couple of years ago, we reached out to VACOR and asked them to quote us. The county, best I can tell, has used Versa or its predecessor, VMLIP, for a very long time. It's always good to compare the options available to us. I've prepared this table that's adjusted a little bit over time as we tried to get things as much apples to apples as we could. You can see on the left side is Versa and the right side is VACOR. And the VACOR proposal includes a few options for public officials' liability, particularly as it relates to the civil claims, these FOIA, COIA-type lawsuit claims and land use claims. As you can see, it's ultimately the, the price for VACOR is at sixty-eight, three sixty-three annually versus seventy-seven oh twenty-two. When you factor in these options, you can see the bottom line, seventy-seven versus seventy-five. Mr. Goff and I, I believe it is appropriate to select this option three, given our history here. And I think we're obviously on much more stable footing relative to FOIA and COIA lawsuits these days, making, as we use belts and suspenders and whatever comes after that. But still, it is most consistent with what coverage you, the board's been, has experienced over the last couple of years. However, the endorsement that covers these type of claims is tighter and more, less likely to lead to any debate between us and our insurer as to whether the insurance will cover a claim. Either insurance group can provide us with adequate insurance with policies that are appropriate for local governments. They're both very well in the state. VACOR does have the majority of counties covered. And I believe I included the list that they provided on who they cover. And I believe Ms. Heitzman told me that they have eighty-seven out of the ninety-five counties. All of our neighbors use VACOR. I have no hesitancy whatsoever to recommend VACOR. The price seems appropriate. The coverage seems appropriate. And I think it's time to make a change.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Again, for keying that up and digging into those numbers. And that was a lot of analysis on this particular item as well. And I'll, I'll just mix things up. I'll ask Mr. Parrish, did, did you have anything on this agenda item that you wanted to add or discuss?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Ms. Donnahey?
I feel the same way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson?
Um, no, as mentioned in our last meeting, when I had an orientation discussion with Mr. Goff, it was clear he had already done a lot of research to compare the two policies in light of our lapse of liability coverage in particular. So I'm pretty comfortable with, with the analysis and I think I have a good idea of where we should go on a decision. My understanding is we don't need to decide this tonight, so I'll, I'll leave any further comments for when we get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Fraser?
It, well, it looks kind of straightforward to me, but I just was wondering about the Line of Duty Act. It just doesn't really mention anything there.
Yes, the LODA, it's Line of Duty Act, LODA. That is one of the areas that changed most recently is we were making sure that both providers were quoting their eighteen paid and seventy-six volunteers. They have, and you can see that VACOR has a stronger price on, on that, which is a big factor in the overall comparison. The numbers of volunteers and paid employees was very heavily scrutinized over the last two years. And going back further, we were paying LODA for members of the volunteer fire and rescue companies who no way in the world are running any sort of rescue call. And they, they have a deep bench of volunteers who might function as a treasurer or cook a meal, but they're not, not certified to fight fires. And so we've managed with the help of the fire companies to cull that down to the actual number of volunteers who require the Line of Duty Act coverage. Our insurance costs in FY twenty-one will be less than they were, I believe, in FY eighteen because of that truing up. We also trued up automobiles and buildings and all the other, and workers' comp through that whole process.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, I, I was just trying to compare the two with the, with the breakdowns that came with them. And, and I just wanted to make sure that it was covering all the, all the nooks and corners and crannies.
And I should note that the, the proposals are attached in their entirety as well as the different endorsements. So for example, if you were to pull up the VACOR proposal, you can see, you can roll through, there's pricing. And then page by page, you can see the details of the property coverage as it goes down. And there'll be a page for LODA. So between now and, and next Monday, if you want to look in more detail, those documents are available online. And then if you have any questions about either of the providers, you can get up to me and I can funnel them off to the insurance providers. We have a VACOR rep attending the Zoom meeting right now.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions on this agenda item? Then I guess we'll revisit it next Monday. That takes us to the next item is the meeting schedule for board budget meetings.
Yeah, we've hammered this every meeting, so, and I've noted it multiple times. So here we are at April twenty-seventh with this budget work session. Your regular meeting is next Monday, at which we'll have a budget item on that as well as the insurance item for the VACOR and Versa. And then you have May eleventh, which is that next Monday, and then May thirteenth is the following Wednesday. All these meetings will be electronic, just like this meeting, and will be advertised as such. And citizens will have an opportunity to provide input, as has been noted in the past, and we'll go through tonight. The school budget needs to be adopted by May fifteenth. And you've hit that the last two years without a problem and at the same time adopted the county budget, the entire budget at the same time. In the last couple of years, the Commissioner of Revenue has asked you to hold off in setting the tax rates to give her more time and consulting with the current Commissioner of Revenue. She's ready to go. And so you can adopt the budget, make appropriations, adopt tax rates, all at the same time, whether that be on May fourth, eleventh to thirteenth. The sooner you do that, it starts a clock for the Commissioner of Revenue to get the land book over to the treasurer. And the sooner that happens, the sooner the bills go out. The sooner the bills go out, the sooner the money starts trickling in, which helps your cash flow and provides a longer period for, you know, the due date is still the same, but people have a little bit more time to plan. And mortgage companies might, might actually send in their money a little early. And we, we like it when the money comes sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. And if that concludes the, the meeting schedule reminder, that takes us to the item D one, the public comment period.
Yes, as you can see up on the screen for four docs, as has been the case for the last several meetings that you've held pursuant to the emergency ordinance, public comment solicited through multiple ways. Individuals can email my office, and this was advertised to be done by noon today. They can call my office and note that they may be able to provide a Zoom platform. So pursuant to that, we did receive an email and I can read that into the record now for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Please do that.
This is from Barney O'Meara. And I will not be able to participate in tonight's virtual meeting via Zoom and want to instead to provide this input by email. Thank you to the supervisors, Administrator Curry and the school board for your commitment to education, character development, health and safety of Rappahannix children, especially those who attend RCPS. Kudos for the system-wide efforts during this pandemic to continue the learning process while the, while the physical facilities are closed. These are bolted items. Second bullet, an emphatic and enthusiastic, quote unquote, "well done" to Superintendent Grimsley and her staff, judging from feedback throughout the county, morale in the school system has not been this high more than a decade. The school board has set a top priority on improving teachers' salaries relative to our surrounding counties and proposed a conservative budget to continue that process. It is already ninety-five thousand dollars less than last year's budget and thus would continue a slow and steady process rather than provide large raises. Next bullet, my wife and I support a county budget that makes no further reduction to the appropriation for RCPS. Last bullet, regardless of what amount is finally allocated to RCPS, please show full faith, confidence and trust in the school board to utilize and disperse those funds as they deem most effective. Thank you for your service to Piedmont District. And this was penned to Supervisor Smith and especially to our youngest citizens who are not yet able to realize what is best for them nor to advocate on their own behalf. Signed, Barney and Mary O'Meara. And that was the only written document that was provided and we received no phone call or voicemail messages.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Curry. And at this time, if any members of the public that are dialed in via Zoom want to participate, up in the upper right-hand corner of your screen, there's a, a pull-down option where it says more and there's three dots up in the corner where there's that more and the three dots. When you tap that or click on that, in the dropdown, you have an option to raise your hand. And if you do that and raise your hand, Mr. Curry can see that you wish to be recognized and we can unmute your mic and you can join the meeting. So at that, at this point, if anyone would, would like to speak, please raise your hand and we will unmute your mic.
Dr. Grimsley?
Thank you. I see Dr. Grimsley has her hand raised. Yes, please go ahead, Dr. Grimsley.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I first just want to say thank you all so very much for recognizing the need for continued transparency and not straying too far away from what was advertised during public hearing. And at the same time, recognizing the work that the, the school staff has done in the wake of this COVID crisis and the very important, very important work that they're, they continue to do. I think the moving the raises to contingency is much better than a full cut as the seventy-five thousand dollars was initially. I think that will I think that will go a long way in continuing to bolster a sense of goodwill among the staff, especially with morale needing to be high right now with all the added work that they are doing in in working toward this distance learning plan and making that as successful as it can be. So I do thank you for that. I do ask that with the contingency should revenue make? Well, to what extent does revenue have to make? Is the state releasing their compensation supplement going to be enough to release that one hundred eighty five to us? Is that going to be a staggered process? I know we don't know what the reconvene sessions will do, but that will certainly help us in planning and getting contracts out and hiring to understand that process a little better. I do know that many of our educational organizations and associations have put a lot of political pressure on Richmond, and it feels like that will be a high priority to release those funds for the compensation supplement. So I think that would probably be the first one to be released. Hopefully for the K twelve funding streams. So if that is done, then is there some commitment that depending on what level locality, revenue also proves that 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 we can count on that? And at what point should we make a decision mid year? If it doesn't make by mid year, do we just say that's a cut? All those things are important for us to understand. And perhaps that's just a continuing discussion. I also wanted to provide a little bit of clarity with the two year biennium mandate. Not so much a mandate, but if you want the money, you have to do what they say. And that's been our our strategy. The four percent is still a goal of the General Assembly and the Governor. But as we we have seen in previous bienniums, what happens is a caboose bill can come in or the General Assembly reconvenes in the second year of the biennium and says, well, we think the three percent in the biennium, as was last year, isn't enough. We want to increase that to five percent. So school districts who didn't take advantage of the known inputs and budget revenue streams then had to overcome that hurdle, basically like kicking the can down the road a little with capital projects, kind of the same idea. You're looking for additional funds to now fund something you hadn't anticipated before. So just to mention that and also to know that the seventy two thousand unallotment, I'm sorry to say, was all of those pieces that we all worked so hard together to advocate for. So through the Rural Schools Coalition and the Joint Resolution. So again, I just really appreciate everyone working with us collaboratively and understanding the the difficult situation with funding schools, especially rural schools, and especially Rappahannock County with the LCI as it is. And I also appreciate you recognizing the work that the staff is doing. They really do need to hear it right now. It has been quite the journey. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley. Anyone else wanting to speak?
Yes.
I I don't recognize that device.
I believe it's Betsy Deel.
Yes, hello all. I I am incredibly in awe of what you all are trying to do through this process of remote meetings and just want to thank the board and Gary for managing this process in a very reasonable and open and transparent fashion. I just want to encourage us all to step back a little bit and think about the progress that we've made so far with really create school scenario that we can all be very proud of. And especially these last couple of months, watching the staff and Dr. Grimsley take the lead in very, very challenging times. And I think we are a model for a lot of rural communities that were caught totally unprepared for what we've we've been confronted with. And I don't quite understand all the details of how we're going to make a decision about the budget, but I do want to urge the board to take a step back and think about the progress that we've made and how we can protect that and and make sure that we don't have any backsliding. And I I believe that we have an incredible opportunity here to really make a statement, not just to our immediate community, but to the rural communities across the country that are struggling with a situation that has has kind of quadrupled the challenges that rural communities already were facing. And I would very much urge us to turn to our school board and ask them to help us figure out how we can manage this this situation without losing the progress that we've made in the last two years under phenomenal leadership, both by the school board and the administration of the school and the staff. So thank you all for for being there and managing this process, which is obviously beyond any of our comprehensions in terms of what we we anticipated in this this upcoming year. But I I do want to encourage us to think a little outside the box and keep going in the in a forward fashion and not backwards.
Thank you, Ms. Deel. And for the record, I believe you reside in the Wakefield District?
I do. Thank you.
Thank you. I forgot to mention that. Please, if if you when you're queued in, if you could identify yourself and the district that you're from. And and generally, we ask you to keep your comments under five minutes. And of course, people generally do that. So thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Again, if you wish to participate, all you have to do is go up to the upper right hand of corner of your screen where there's three dots that say more. And if you choose the raise your hand option in the corner, you can be identified by Mr. Curry and then he'll unmute your mic. And I don't I don't see anyone else wishing to speak. Is that correct, Mr. Curry?
That is correct. I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And with that, I would declare the public comment period is closed. The last item on our agenda this evening is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You have a couple of members muted. Let me unmute. I'll make that motion, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Debbie.
Donna Hay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Y'all have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you.